Welcome to the August 24th edition of the Selectment's Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, its children with which it stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public announcements, Mike, did you make any?
I have nothing tonight.
Jim?
Nothing tonight.
No, I don't.
I have one. It's not even from myself, this is from Chief Netal. Chief Netal would like to provide a brief report of the actions of a member of the general public and three Abington Fire Department members who were responsible for saving a life on early morning of Sunday, August 23rd, 2020. Around midnight, while investigating a fire alarm activation at 10 railroad street, firefighter crews and myself were verbally alerted by a member of the public, who wishes to remain anonymous. A vehicle struck on the railroad tracks of Burke Street with an oncoming train approaching. With no time to react or properly notify, they immediately had to stop the train. Firefighter firefighters Derek Hamadi and Mike Cole J., followed by Captain George Gaddy, began to sprint in full firefighting gear towards the Burke Street crossing to reach the vehicle at a considerable distance. Firefighter Hamadi was the first to approach, but was outpaced by the train, which was traveling at a high rate of speed. Firefighter Hamadi noticed the passenger vehicle driver outside of her car, appearing confused, and was able to direct her away from the tracks enough to avoid being struck, just as the train passed her. Her vehicle was struck, but fortunately she was not injured. Firefighter Cole J. was able to visually notify the train engineer to begin the stopping process by waving his flashlight into correct manner, possibly reducing impact. He then ran to the front of the stopped train close to the Plymouth Street cross and checked on the condition of the engineer and the train. Captain Gaddy entered the last passenger car and assessed all passengers and train personnel for injuries, of which none were reported. I took, which is Chief Netal, took overall command of the incident and was able to witness their actions directly. There is no doubt, had they not been alerted to the vehicle along the tracks and our personnel rushed over verbally to alert the driver to move from her vehicle, as well as to begin to slow down the train, the incident would have had a very different outcome. Chief Netal wants to recognize and thank the actions of all the people previously mentioned, as well as their professionalism. Abington truly has a highly trained, experienced, and capable members of the department working 24 hours a day to keep all of us safe, among the efforts which were able to be witnessed firsthand.
Great job, Mike. Derek, if you're listening, great job.
We had a great story from the police department that I'd love to even share, and just another reminder of the great men that protect us while we sleep early on a Sunday morning.
Thank you.
I'll issue a formal apology there.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, so first up on our random agenda is public hearings, none of which were stopped until 7:15. So we're going to go down to the action discussion items, and the first one is to vote to approve the minutes of August 10th, 2020. So I'll give you a second to go through those, and I'll leave the camera. And the motion to vote to approve the minutes of the August 10th, 2020, for the Selectment meeting.
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes of August 10th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Remedious. Minutes are approved. Second action item is a request to appoint Paul Pyrrhus as Democratic Registrar of Voters.
Well, we have to have one Democrat, one Republican, is that what we do?
I'm not sure, but I know they requested that we appoint a Democrat.
Yeah, so I'll make that motion.
One second. Any discussion? All those in favor of appointing Paul Pyrrhus, say aye.
Aye.
Number three was discussion on town meeting, and I'm opposed to town manager of courts, so I'll maybe even take a walk through that.
Okay, as you recall, we voted at our last meeting to open a warrant for a special town meeting on October 19th, 2020. As of today, as we're forming this warrant, there will be only three or four budget articles. We're going to have two or three road acceptance articles. Those will require us to have a public hearing with this board prior to them going to town meeting. And then there were six zoning articles that we had pulled off from the annual town meeting for, you know, reasons of keeping it expeditious, that I think we can put back on and take care of that. So I would expect to have a draft to the board prior to our next meeting, so you can review it, and our intentions will be to close the warrant by September 1, probably in the meeting of September 28th. So that's about it, just wanted to reiterate that, you know, there was a vote and we have a warrant opened now. Going into my report, I'm going to give you an update, as you know, there's several paving projects that are going on, and I'm sure everybody noticed the one on Plymouth Way. So just a review of that, I had asked John Stone, because obviously a lot of this was approved quite a while back, but I had some questions on it. So the Board of Selectmen voted to adopt the complete streets policy that John had drafted back in 2018. Policy was approved by the state and was actually given a high score of 94 out of 100. Town was awarded a technical assistance grant through the state in the amount of $36,700. With that, they got a consultant and they created a prioritized list of 30 projects in town that qualify for funding. The state chose this particular Lincoln Boulevard to Plymouth Way, she had used pedestrian bike path from the list. They awarded a grant for just under $400,000 to complete the park. The shared use path will begin at the high school and extend out to the corner of Washington. They'll also be tightening up on the south side of Lincoln Boulevard. We had met, or John and the department has met with CEO needs, they changed a few things to help fit into their needs. They did at one time, a few months ago, I don't know if anybody remembers when, quite around the time I started, they set up some cones to sort of show what that traffic flow would be like and what it would end up looking like. They did do a traffic study to see that, you know, make sure that the end result would not cause any congestion on two routes. And John said that there's zero local tax dollars, this is all being funded by those grants. The other projects that you've probably noticed is we have a binder course over here at Town Hall, you know, in the worst area that we have of the Parkham Mall, and they did start the senior center. I believe the binder course was going down on that project today or tomorrow, with the hopes of final course and the final coach being done hopefully by the end of the month. Early voting has taken place, as everybody is aware. The hours are running tomorrow through Thursday from 8:30 to 4:30, and Friday from 8:30 to 12:30. We want to remind anybody who's coming to Town Hall is that, you know, you have to remember to wear a mask, be able to follow the state guidelines for social distancing, and if you don't feel well, please, you know, stay home, there are other options that are available to you. I did get a message from Leanne, Leanne Adams, our town clerk, and their update is that as of today, the town clerk's office has processed 2,339 early voted ballots and 292 absentee ballots. This voting season is many questioning the early absentee voting process. We go to the post office daily and have a very good relationship with them. They keep Abington ballots in-house for faster delivery, so in other words, they're not, the ballots aren't going to Rockton, they're going from the post office straight back and forth, so they have been working very well for the town. Often the ballots that are mailed are received by the voter the very next day. You may mail your ballot back to us, we'll use the box outside the front door of Town Hall. You may call or email the office at any time to talk to any one of the voting questions you may have. If you're curious if we received your ballot or application, please call, we'll tell you when it was mailed and receive. Primary day is September 1st, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Emerald Hall where we did our last election. This is a primary, if you are not in a party, you will need to tell the checker what ballot you want. We have four ballot choices this year: Democrat, Republican, Green Rainbow, and Libertarian. Again, call or email Leanne if you have any questions or concern. Voting is a privilege and we take it very seriously here. So like I said, you can go online, you can get through to Leanne's office through email or phone call or stop in. So another thing that we're working on, as I mentioned, we started the process, initiated the process of updating the personnel policies, and the process is that, working with our Labor Council, the updated policies first will be reviewed in the draft form by myself with Labor Council, and then we send the draft policies to the unions to see if they need to be impact bargained, that's by statute. Once the policies are finalized, including any revisions from impact bargaining, then we'll bring them to the Board of Selectmen through a review. You know, if the Board of Selectmen does not feel the policies are having issues with the policies, then they become effective on the 15th day after they present it to the Board. So the policies that we've initiated so far, as we started the travel policy, which obviously is just going to be in effect until such time as the COVID emergency ends. But we are also initiating a vehicle use policy, electronic use policy, and code of conduct, so those are all of the works we, you know, again, we have to get them out to all the departments that are affected, just to see what the revisions are, what sort of effect this will have on them. MRI management study implementation, so I have been advised by Chief Bajenski that he has authorized Deputy Chief Cutter to begin the process of implementing the recommendations of the MRI management study. To that end, I have requested and received an implementation outline from the deputy chief. I'll share the outline with the board and place it on a future agenda, I think, probably this September 14th meeting. In the meantime, many of the tasks have already been implemented. And additionally, it is important to note that the deputy chief is in the midst of the reaccreditation process. The department must undergo this every few years, requires a significant amount of time documentation, they work with their priorities for verification scoring. So they do have a lot going on, but he is, like I said, it is a fairly good schedule that he has forwarded to me, so I'm looking forward to sharing it with you guys and getting going on that. Town manager's coordinator, so we've taped a couple of segments already, I just did one with the library a couple of weeks ago, and hopefully Abington Kato will have that up and running pretty soon. This week, I'll be meeting with John Stone over at the DPW and Susan DeJisper over at the senior center, and I'm going to record a couple more episodes. And again, this is, you know, an attempt for me to get out and let everybody know, you know, who the different departments are, the different department heads, what they're doing, and what sort of programs we have going on, and, you know, how it's going to affect everybody. That is my manager's report.
Thank you. So at this time, with our first public hearing being 7:15 and being just short of a half hour away from that, I'll entertain a motion to recess until that time, since we cannot legally start any earlier.
I would make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? I will be recessed until 7:15. Listening notice. So this is, so maybe you can give some background better than I can on this, or would you go right to this? But the community resilience building workshop summary, so this was some workshops that were held previously.
Do you want to explain your show? I'll jump right into it. So, good evening, I'm Lucie, I work for planning board, and this is our consultant for our MVP grant, Bob Coxel, he's going to give the presentation tonight. Just a tiny bit of background, I applied for, we obtained an MVP grant, which is a municipal vulnerability grant, and it is of climate resiliency, and the state has granted a lot of grant money available to help cities and towns with that. So we applied for, we were granted $17,000. Bob came in, we had several workshops, we had a bunch of different department heads in these workshops, and people from the community, and we worked together over Zoom, because of course it happened during the pandemic. But we actually put together a really decent list of what the town's vulnerabilities are, and a priority list of those vulnerabilities that we can apply to the state forum and hopefully get some grant money to start helping correct them. So no further ado, I'll let Bob do his show.
Okay, thanks for the introduction, Liz. So Liz gave a good overview of why we're here, to sort of publicly present the findings of this planning grant, and I guess, I know you've got a packed agenda tonight, and we've got about 15 minutes, so I'll just jump right into it, but preface it by saying that this listening session is a required part of the grant, it's sort of the last piece of the grant project, so getting these findings out there to the public and having a venue for the public to respond and provide comments is part of that. So I'll just jump ahead. So this presentation will take about 15 minutes, and will provide an overview of the MVP program, climate change projections for Abington, and a summary of the planning grant results and next steps. So the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant program, or the MVP program, provides support for cities and towns in Massachusetts to begin the process of planning for climate change resiliency and also implementing priority projects. The state awards communities with funding to complete vulnerability assessments and to develop action-oriented resiliency plans. Communities such as yours who complete the program become certified as an MVP community and are eligible for MVP action grant funding and other funding opportunities. And that's really the whole point of this, is to, you know, this small planning grant tees the town up to get the much larger pot of money that's now available to you, and we'll talk more about that. The program was funded by the 2018 environmental bond bill, which included over $200 million for funding for climate change adaptation. So the MVP program steps are to first obtain a planning grant, which was explained, and which you did, to next complete a workshop and write a summary of findings, which we're here to talk about tonight, and then as soon as that's completed, you become a state-certified MVP community. Over the last three years, over three-quarters of the state's cities and towns have participated in this program, and funding for the program has exceeded over $17 million to date. The most recent action grant round, that's the step that follows this, that the action grants, in the fall of 2019 funded over 50 projects throughout the state for a total of over $10 million. So the MVP program funds many project types, and when I say the program, I'm really talking about the action grants that will follow. It funds many project types designed to increase resiliency relative to potential climate change impacts. The most common types are more detailed vulnerability assessments, so you may know that you have flooding on a road, but you don't quite know how to fix it, you don't have the engineering done yet, so those types of more detailed assessments. It funds redesigns and retrofits to rebuild existing infrastructure, for example, to increase the size of a culvert to pass larger flood flows, and also nature-based solutions for flood protection, drought mitigation, and water quality improvements. There are many other eligible project types, for example, the program was expanded in 2019 to include energy resiliency projects such as installation of solar panels on the roofs of public buildings to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So now I'll give a quick overview of some climate change projections that drive the MVP program. Over the last 50 to 100 years, the Massachusetts climate has been changing. We've seen increases in temperature and associated changes to the growing season, sea level, and heavy precipitation events. For example, the average temperature across the state has increased by almost 3 degrees Fahrenheit since 1895. Climate change projections from Massachusetts can be found at resilientma.org, which is the state's website, which provides interactive tools to explore data related to climate change. Based on these projections, it's expected that the average temperature and rainfall may continue to significantly increase here in Plymouth County. For example, the average temperature is expected to increase by almost 5 degrees Fahrenheit by the year 2100, and rainfall is expected to increase by 2.5 inches per year. So what does that mean? To put those projections into perspective, this figure shows how temperatures in Massachusetts are changing and have been changing based on several climate change scenarios. Under the worst-case conditions, the average temperature for Massachusetts could be similar to that of South Carolina by the year 2100. Below a greenhouse gas emission scenario would project temperatures similar to that of Delaware. And as you can see in this figure, the temperatures have already started shifting from 1990 to present, where sort of compared to 1990, we're more positioned, you know, close to the climate of what Connecticut was in 1990. So the potential consequences of climate change are widespread, and these include increases in flooding, increases in health-related pests such as ticks and mosquitoes, and more frequent extreme weather events. So one key piece of the town's MVP planning grant was to hold a workshop, and typically this is an all-day in-person workshop, but due to COVID-19 limitations, the workshop was split into two web-based virtual meetings following the protocols outlined by the state. The goal of the workshop was to have community stakeholders work together and complete a climate change and natural hazard vulnerability assessment, and to develop prioritized actions to address these vulnerabilities, and also to improve on strengths that the town currently has. The workshop was based on the Community Resiliency Building Program developed by the Nature Conservancy, and you can find more information about that program at communitiresiliencebuilding.com, which is the link at the bottom of that slide. The workshop was broken into three primary exercises, to first identify the town's top climate-related hazards, second, to identify the town's strengths and areas of concern, such as specific undersized pipes or maybe a dam that might be at risk of failing, and finally, to identify specific actions to address those concerns that could be funded with action grants. So the MVP workshop was conducted as these two meetings on May 12th and May 19th, 2020, and the town efforts in planning the workshop were led by a core team as listed here. The workshop was attended by 11 stakeholders, as well as the state's MVP coordinator for the region. So as I mentioned, the first exercise was to identify the town's top climate-related hazards, and the town selected flooding, strong storms, and drought and extreme temperatures as the top three climate-related hazards. Strong storms is kind of a broad term that includes a variety of storm types, including rain, snow, high winds, and ice storms. And this is a really tough slide to see, but everyone is supposed to, I guess, squeeze one of those into every presentation, so this is just to kind of give a sense of how this workshop process flowed. So first, the participants identified the top hazards up there, which I know you can't read, but those are the ones I just listed. The next step was, which was to fill out that left-hand column over here, which was to identify areas of concern and also strengths that the town had related to climate change. And the final exercise is that big chunk over to the right was to actually populate specific actions, so if you were concerned about flooding as a major concern, then it was, okay, where are we having flooding, and what specifically can we do about it? What do we need to rebuild? What do we need money for? So now we've got this list of actions that have been prioritized specific to Abington. So now I'm going to run down the top concerns related to infrastructure. So with regard to dams, dams requiring repair due to flooding and damage from high peak flows include Beaver Brook Dam, Island Grove Pond Dam, and Hunts Brook Dam. For bridges, the Central Street Bridge requires repair associated with flooding and high flows, and this has been identified by the state as a significant hazard bridge in a recent inspection. Road flooding, flooding of roads due low points or proximity to surface water is an issue in several spots, including Chestnut Street, Ashland Street, under Route 123, and also Shaw Avenue. Ice buildup, the workshop participants identified that ice buildup on roads was increasing in the winter due to increased use of sump pumps, so it's kind of a multiple things going on there. You have the more intense and more frequent rain events that are forcing people into using their sump pumps, and this is then during the cold months freezing up on the roads and leading to safety issues. And finally, water supply. The water supply for the town is considered a vulnerability because it comes from great sandy bottom pond through a single pipe, so that means if there was something to happen to that pipe, or if the supply from that pond became at risk, your water supply is not very resilient. So top concerns related to society included vulnerable populations, senior housing facilities are vulnerable to extreme heat and impacts from power outages, including senior housing here on Gloveritz Way. The town's emergency alert system is considered to be quite good, but it was acknowledged that it's not available to all populations, so the NICSIL system requires that citizens obtain information from the town website, and there needs to be a broader way to get information out rather than forcing people to come in. Critical facilities with one egress, so these are areas that might be at risk, say during an extreme storm event, if a tree was to come down and block the roadway, there's, you know, some of these facilities are critical and would need to have a second way of getting people in and out. So the senior housing facilities have one egress and are in flood-prone areas, and that may impede emergency access, ambulances and so on, access to getting people out to shelters. And other critical town facilities included here, the town offices right here, the emergency shelter at Abington High School, which also only have one egress. And then finally, air conditioning at public schools. Two elementary schools are not air-conditioned, and Abington High School is not fully air-conditioned, it does have a cooling system, but not a full air-conditioning system, and they're vulnerable to periods of extreme heat, which are going to be more frequent. The top concerns in the final category of environmental included phosphorus loading, nutrient enrichment for Island Grove Pond, leading to more frequent, more severe algal blooms and other nuisance conditions, and increased nuisance vegetation. Erosion and tree loss was an issue associated with flooding and strong storms in the Island Grove area, and also the potential for loss of trees due to damage from the willia delgoid, which is expected to increase in its population as the climate warms. There is an increased wildfire risk due to drought and extreme temperatures, and the wooded Carista property in the northeastern part of town was noted as a particular property of risk. And then finally, risk of property damage due to drought or flooding, in particular the Strawberry Valley Golf Course, was considered an economic loss risk. So a couple of strengths that the town has, cooling stations, there are multiple town-owned properties that already are used by the town as cooling stations during heat events, and you've got a town-owned pool and senior center, so these are, these are things that help you become, that'll help you with your resiliency to heat changes. And overall, the town has good tree canopy throughout the town. So now we're just going to quickly go over the top three recommended actions, so these would be the ones that would be sort of at the top of the list to get funding if the town chooses to apply for action grants. So number one was repair of the Island Grove Pond Dam. So the issue here first would be to further assess, get a more detailed engineering assessment to build upon what's already been done in a recent emergency action plan, to get more information related to climate resiliency built into that, do a little more modeling to project into the future so that the design is resilient for years to come. This could include additional dam inspections, engineering assessments, and flood modeling for higher intensity storms. And then the second step of that is to simply take the money that you'd get from a grant and repair. That would include engineering feasibility analysis, permitting, engineering design, and the actual construction. Second was to evaluate the senior center as a shelter and also provide a backup generator. So the issue here is that the senior center currently is used as a cooling station only during the day during extreme heat events. during the day during extreme heat events. It does not have the capacity for overnight because a backup generator is not there to provide power in the case of a power outage during an extreme event. So the solution is to get funding and install a backup generator with clean energy technology that has no greenhouse gas emissions. The reason for that is if you were to get funding for this, gas generators are not fundable, so they, there are other technologies out there called black start or photovoltaic battery storage that, no greenhouse gas emissions, and they will, they'll pay you to do that. And also to assess the feasibility of facility improvements needed to provide overnight housing during heat waves or other emergency. And that's everything from having cots and blankets and all the things that you'd need to keep people overnight. And finally, the number three action was to repair the Central Street Bridge. The problem here is that it has been identified as a significant hazard during a recent inspection, and that with climate change, we're going to have more frequent and more severe flood conditions and more, and higher peak flow rates that are going to further put that bridge at risk. So expand upon the current assessment to include climate resiliency risks for those bigger peak flows and more intense events, and then use action grant funding to rehabilitate the bridge based on those recommendations. And a very quick just run through other high-priority actions. So those top three ones that I mentioned, you're not in any way beholden to apply for grant funding for those first. You can take any action item that's in this report, and you could apply for that as, you could just decide tomorrow that that's the town's number-one priority. So you're not in any way held to this. So a real quick run through the other priority actions are to conduct a further assessment of Beaver Brook Dam and repair as necessary, conduct a study to determine climate-related risks to the town's water supply, and actions to improve resiliency related to climate change, to install air, central air conditioning and a backup generator with clean energy technology at the senior housing here on Glenwood Way and Shaw Ave, conduct a feasibility study to evaluate options for second emergency egress to town properties here at Town Hall, and to implement nutrient loading reduction measures and other algae control measures for Island Grove Pond as recommended in a recent study. So the next steps, now that this study is completed, is to submit the final report, including any feedback from this listening session tonight. And at that, at that point, the town is now an MVP-designated community by the state. And then you can start to implement those recommendations that we talked about tonight. So really, it's just a question of, you know, Liz or others on that committee deciding, you know, if you want to apply for a grant in the next action round, which would probably be next spring. And in terms of public feedback to this listening session tonight, there is a feedback survey link that's up here on this slide, and also all of the documents that we've referenced, the report and this presentation and all the links that are embedded within it are available on the town website, and...
And for me?
Yes. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. I hope I was at least close to 15 minutes and keeping you on schedule. Yeah, plus or minus a few.
Any questions from the board?
Just how often are the grants available? Is this a yearly basis?
It's, so the program's been running since 2017, and in the first, I think, two or three years, up until last year, they were doing the action grants twice a year, and it looks like this year they've kind of shifted to a once-a-year basis, but that is subject to change. It's been a top priority for the Baker administration since it started, but with COVID and all the funding changes for a lot of agencies, I think right now the, the understanding is at least once per year.
So when is the deadline?
It would be most likely around, you know, late spring, like in May of 2020.
So we should start preparing for next spring now?
And, and our regional representative emails us all the time, not only about the things that are happening with this, but other current opportunities. I try to forward those to the departments that they belong to. But yes, so we'll have plenty of those up when the application deadline opens and when it closes.
So it's a good idea to have a good couple of months of lead time because, you know, you're going to have to have a little bit of back and forth figuring out what kind of match the town might be able to provide, and whether it's cash or in-kind services. So a few months is about right.
I think the priorities that you have identified, I'm not speaking for the board, but we've actually been discussing those issues this summer. So I think if any way we could get grants for that, it would be great next year.
Any good from public questions?
Okay, well, we'll leave the, the online survey open for as long as, as you want, and I'll just communicate with Liz about when we can decide to call it done, and then we'll just get the final report into the state.
Thank you.
Greg, go. Want to just throw it to you? Open the meeting. Okay, next up on the agenda, 7:30 is the Complaint Dogs Owner by Stephen Karen May at 44 Cavers. Are nuisance or dangerous dogs? So we're going to open this meeting. Greg, do you need to open this like a public hearing, like a meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chair, through, before you do, we have somebody who needs to dial in by phone.
Okay.
So can we take care of that before we officially open the hearing?
Do we want to call them right away?
If you can call, your phone's probably better.
Yeah, well, do we have a number to call? The chairman appointed Mr. Alex Zansin as our telecommunications director.
Yeah, we might have to ask Liz how to handle the phone here.
904.
Liz, you want to show us how to use this phone?
Sure. It is my phone.
It is your phone, so, yeah, why don't you get him on there, and then we'll put the microphone next to him.
Do you have a number?
Is it number 904?
Uh, 904. 47, 476, 7655. Jim Crosby. Only just let him know that he's on.
Hey, Jim.
Okay, Jim, you're on.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay.
Hi, Jim, it's Jim, I'm the chairman of the board, Sluckman here in Abington, just letting you know that you're on speakerphone here. We're about gonna open the public hearing.
Okay.
Having that all said, I'll take a motion. Open the hearing.
Make a motion to open the hearing on nuisance or dangerous dog hearing today, 24th at 7:15, 7:30, correct?
No, second. Any discussion? All the people who opened the hearing say aye. Unanimous, hands open. So Greg, did you want to walk us through their procedure?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, my name is Greg Corvo, town council for the town of Abington, and I'll be assisting the board with processing this complaint based on allegations that two dogs are nuisance or dangerous dogs as defined in the Massachusetts general laws. Before we get started, to members of the board, as well as members of the public here and watching on TV, the proceeding will generally proceed in three phases. Okay, so during the first phase, you will hear evidence and testimony from the party who made the complaint regarding the subject dogs. This can be in the form of sworn witness testimony and any documents or photographs that they wish to provide. Council for the dog owner will have an opportunity to ask any questions through the chair, and members of the board and myself will have an opportunity to ask questions as well. When that testimony is completed, we will ask if there is any testimony from the town's animal control officer, and we'll proceed in much the same way with witness testimony and questioning from the various parties. Once that part of the proceeding is concluded, we'll move on to what I refer to as Phase Two, which is the dog owner's opportunity to provide their defense. So they can provide any witnesses or documents that they wish to in defense of the dogs, and like in the first proceeding, there will be an opportunity for myself, for the complainants, and for members of the board to ask questions of the witnesses. And then we'll reach the third and final phase, which is when the board will deliberate and render a decision. The board will be passing on two questions. The first question is whether the dogs are nuisance dogs or dangerous dogs as those terms are defined in the statute, and if the answer to that question is yes, then what if any remedy should be issued to abate the nuisance or the danger posed by the dogs? So it will require a vote on those two questions, and then the hearing will be concluded. So before we get started, are there any questions about the procedure?
Could we get some introductions as to all the players here, this gentleman, and who's on the phone with us and everything?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. First off is the, the complainant here. Yes, would you please stand and introduce yourself?
My name's Gail Bergen.
And Ms. Bergen, do you intend on presenting any other witnesses here tonight?
No.
Okay. Okay, and is the animal control officer here? Thank you. And Jeremy, would you like to introduce yourself?
Jeremy Cohen, representing Karen May, Steve May. Karen's obviously here, and then the only other person we have is by phone, Jim Crosby. He's our dog bite expert. CV was circulated earlier.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, any other questions?
I don't mean to interrupt, but if you can move the speakerphone, I'm only getting about every third word here.
Yeah, they have to go to the mic.
They have to go to the mic there, too. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, any further questions regarding the procedure?
No.
Thank you.
Anybody have more questions?
Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to proceed one at a time. If you're giving testimony, I'd ask that you approach the microphone, that you state your full name and address for the record, and then that you raise your right hand to be sworn. So through you, Mr. Chair, can we have Ms. Bergen step up?
Hi, my name's Gail Bergen, I live at 71 Morton Street.
Thank you, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Thank you. You may now give your testimony to the board.
Okay, I'm actually just gonna, I wrote out my statement, I'm just gonna read it. Very emotional for me, so when I tell what happened, but on Thursday, June 4th, 2020, of the left, 8 o'clock in the morning, I left my house at Morton, 71 Morton Street to go for a walk. And when I got to the end of Morton Street, it's actually Morton Street Extension, it's a little, and I met Karen and her two dogs, and we said hi to each other, and one dog, a pit bull, ran full-tilt at me, I was only a few feet away, and the leash slipped from her grass. The dog grabbed me by the right ankle, knocked me down, bit my foot through my sneaker. She got the dog off of me, I fell backwards, I was on my back, and as she got the dog off of me, her other dog came over and bit me on the arms, I was on the ground. She got the dogs away, asked me if I was okay, and then I went home. I had a bite on the top of my right foot and on my ankle, and I have a bite on my left armpit area. I called my friend, who was a nurse, and she came and gave me first aid. I called, I called Joe Kenny, I called my doctor's office, and they called me back later and said they wanted me to come in, and I had to go in, and I had to get a tetanus booster and go on antibiotics, and they cleaned my wounds and told me how to take care of them. I also scraped my elbow and had kind of a sore tailbone from the fall for a little while. And that was that day. Another day, I was driving down, the dogs barked and ran at my car. I'm afraid to walk out of my house, I can't go anywhere without going by their house, I can't walk anywhere without going by their house, and I'm afraid of meeting the dogs, and also we have a lot of children in the neighborhood, and I'm afraid of it happening again to a child. I just would like you to remove the dogs, please. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Bergen. Did you submit a written statement to the board?
Yep. There's a written statement, and there's some photographs of my bites.
Thank you. And members of the board, do you have that written, written statement?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and ma'am, do you agree that the photos that you submitted can be part of the record of this proceeding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, can we have Mr. Cohen ask if he has any questions?
Thank you. What are the out-of-pocket medical expenses, if any?
I have a couple of co-pays and a little, some first-day things, I didn't add them up, it's probably about $40. It's not, it wasn't a big monetary loss for me, it's an emotional issue, isn't it?
I'm sorry, just when we ask questions, if you step up to the mic, just for the people watching at home.
Sure.
And family, well, social distance, of course, you can. Thank you.
Should we use my microphone?
We have no, no further questions.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, do you have questions?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Just a question, one of the second, don't you know where the second dog came from?
Yeah, she had them both on a leash.
They were both on a leash?
Yeah, and they both got away from her.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Did they break the leash, or did they?
No, they, she left, they got away from her, they didn't, the leash didn't break, they, she let go.
And you have a previous relationship with the dog owners?
Oh, we're neighbors.
As neighbors, just friendly, huh?
Yeah.
And now, you said the end was on, you want to see us remove the dogs?
I, I can't, I, I don't know, can, can they be rehomed? I mean, I tell you, my house is behind theirs, I cannot walk anywhere without going by their house, I never know when the dogs are going to be there, and I'm afraid of that.
How long have you lived?
Have only I lived there?
Yeah.
Since 1996.
And how long have they lived there?
A few years after that, I don't know when they moved in, they built a house, I don't remember what year they...
Did they have the dogs when they moved in?
No, they had a different dog.
When did they get these dogs, roughly?
They had cinnamon, the second dog that bit me, they've had longer than the other one, they've only had the other one a few years, I think, if that...
And what kind of dog is the second one?
I think it's a lab hound mix, but you could ask her, I mean, I don't know what kind of dog it is.
Have you ever seen these dogs bitten before then?
No.
So it's that?
They, the, the dog, the cinnamon, the dog they've had the longest, I mean, they tie it out, they used to tie it out, and it would always run from my car as far as it would go on the leash, on the lead, but I've never seen them loose before, no.
Any other questions?
I have none.
Nothing further, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chair, through you, next up we have Animal Control Officer Joe Kenny.
So, I'm Animal Control, Joe Kenny. I was out there on June 4th.
Mr. Kenny, I'm sorry, can we just have you sworn in first?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, guys.
That's okay. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, guys, I'm Joe Kenny, Animal Control. I was out 71 Flaverty, 44. Yeah, that's true. I'm sorry. But I was out there on June 4th, the dog, I got the call, the dogs, it got loose and bitten. So when I got there, the dogs were contained, they already, like the wounds had been cleaned up, and I ended up quarantining the pit gray and white pit bull, Murphy. Both dogs were up to date on their shots, they were both registered. I hadn't had any other complaints or calls about the dogs, and since then I haven't had anything. There was a bite to my... There was a bite to the foot, there was a shoe that prevented it from being anything serious, and the dogs had knocked down, so, I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Gilburden.
Ah, Gilburden, they had knocked down Gilburden, but other than that, there wasn't too much damage in the shoulder, we weren't sure at the time what was going on with it. So I ended up quarantining the gray and white pit bull, did standard 10-day quarantine, and then the dog was released, I haven't heard anything since then. I heard, gotten a second report recently that the dogs had gotten out, and this is how I heard all the hair. But other than that, I haven't had any calls or many complaints about the dogs. At the time, I actually recommended to the owners that, for peace's sake, that they muzzled the pit bull when they took it out, just to make people feel more comfortable. From my understanding, it had been happening since then, but like I said, I haven't had any other calls or anything, so, nothing loose, nothing barking, that's it.
But did you say you did get one call since then?
No, I haven't gotten any calls. I got notice that the dogs had charged a car or something, just prior to this hearing request, but it wasn't a phone call, it wasn't a reported thing.
So how did you get the notice?
The notice, I got at the town hall, I came in, there's a written notice, with the request of the hearing.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, you guys have a copy of that as well.
And do you know, can you be more specific about what types of dogs these are?
Yeah, so, Murphy, is the younger pit mix, I think, he's a gray and white, bigger dog. He's relatively young, I think he's been registered for two years, assuming the owners bought him two years ago. The other dog, I think it's cinnamon, seemed to be like a hound, lab kind of mix, dark ring color, and that dog's been registered with the town for at least four years.
And when you went out to do your investigation, did you interact with the dogs?
Yes, I did. I saw both the dogs, and they were acting hard to make, I pet bolted them, and that was the extent of it. Throughout the quarantine, you got to see the dogs, so, saw both the dogs, and I didn't have a problem, they didn't try to bite or anything like that. They barked when I went to the door, and that was the extent of the dogs with me.
Through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Cohen, you have any questions?
How long after the incident had the animal control officer seen the dogs?
It was shortly thereafter, within about an hour. I was, as soon as I got the call, I came out, so it was pretty soon after.
And this allegation that they charged a car, did you know anything?
I didn't get any calls for it, I just, when we got the request for the hearing, it was in that, that's the only other notice I've had, I've had.
Okay, and aside from what's happened with Bergens, has there ever been an incident with either dog from the mayhem?
No, no, I've not had any other calls on the dogs.
Thank you, no more questions. Mr. Chair, are there any questions from you or members of the board? From the board?
No.
No questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Kenny, we're all set. And Ms. Bergen, do you have any other witnesses or evidence you'd like to present?
I just, can I say one more?
Please approach the microphone.
Can I just say one?
Well, you have to approach the microphone.
Sorry, I don't really, I don't have any witnesses, Karen and I are the only ones that witnessed it. I just want to say, like, I had three bites, but it was vicious, it was horrifying what happened. I was knocked to the ground and bitten by two dogs, it was very, very scary, and I just want you to know that even though my bites are gonna heal, it's, I haven't healed from it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, so, as I explained earlier, that concludes Phase One of the proceeding, which comprises the complaints against the dogs. So now, we can move on to Phase Two, in which the dog owner has an opportunity to present their defense. Through you, Mr. Chair, I would turn it over to Attorney Cohen.
Thank you. So, an important thing to note here is that the maze, where they live, they continue to live there for one reason, and it's their 98-year-old neighbor next door, who lives alone, her husband died, I think in 1965, or when she was 65, she's 98, and they started off carrying, getting her mail, paying her bills, and now, they're only family. If she's trying, they're trying to keep her aging in place, once that, her situation changes, they plan to move anyway. But I think it's important to know that they, at least on one half, they're good neighbors on one side. Tonight, we're asking that the dogs be deemed a nuisances, and I provided it, but essentially, the definition of nuisance can be a dog that attacks, but its actions were grossly disproportionate under all of the circumstances. So I think the most important circumstance, which we didn't hear about, is that the parties, they never greeted and said hello before the bite, as our coming up, Morton, on Flavory...
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Cohen, through you to the chair. If you're gonna have a description of the incident, I think we need to have it from a witness.
Okay, so let me just walk us through where we go.
Okay, thank you.
You hear testimony that neither party could see each other with the hedges there. So, just as Ms. Bergen was startled by my client and the dogs, so was my client startled, and the dogs were startled. A difference now is that she would never walk both dogs at the same time, so she's agreed, no matter what, to walk one dog per one adult. And you'll hear testimony that the dogs, if they're ever in the yard on a tie-out, are only in the yard on a tie-out with an adult, so they're never just left outside, these dogs don't like to be outside that often. And you'll hear from our expert, Jim Crosby. This is important because there are scales of bites, which he'll walk us through briefly, but he's had a chance to look at everything that you've seen, up to anything that you were handed today. He knows about the dogs running at the car although they stayed on the leash, he's seen the photos, and he's seen the descriptions. So, as we're asking that they be deemed nuisance dogs, they be... Mistakes happen, this was a mistake, you'll hear from Karen how sorry she is, she's been trying to pay the bills from the beginning, but obviously, they're not that big, but she's offered, from 10 minutes after the incident, she was calling her. So, at this time, I'd like to have, since we've just heard about the bites, have Jim Crosby, Jim, can you just introduce yourself, give a brief description of what you do and how long you've been doing it, and just tell us what you saw through the evidence that's been submitted?
Mr. Crosby, I don't know if you can hear me, but before you begin, even though we can't see you, I do need to have you sworn in.
Yeah, I heard Mr. Cohen asked me to introduce myself. The phone on your end, the speakerphone, I'm getting about every fourth word. Whoever the lady was that testified, I missed most of her testimony, and the male voice I heard, I got spotted with. So, I need, I'm sorry, and I apologize, but I need whoever's speaking to be closer to that speakerphone so I can hear.
Good evening, Mr. Crosby, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you very well, thank you.
Great, my name is Greg Corvo, I'm the attorney for the town of Abington, and you're gonna give testimony in this proceeding, but before you do, I would ask that you be sworn in. So even though we can't see you, I'll take your word for it, will you please raise your right hand?
I am.
Thank you, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Thank you. I'm now gonna turn things over to Attorney Cohen, who's gonna ask you some questions.
Certainly.
Jim, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay, can you just share with us what it is that you do?
I'll try to boil it down pretty quickly, I am, most of my work is as a expert consultant on dog aggression, dog bites, dog bite investigation, dog behavior, the evidence issues and legal issues around that. For background, I am a certified behavior consultant, as certified by the Council for Certification of Professional Dog Trainers. I'm a retired police lieutenant with the sheriff's office here in Jacksonville, Florida. I have served as the chief officer of two different animal control agencies here in Florida, as such, I am still a certified animal control officer. I am a subject matter expert for several organizations such as the National Sheriff's Association and the National Animal Control Association on dog bite investigations and dog aggression. I've been accepted in local, state, and federal courts in, I think, 13 or 15 states now, and four or five federal districts, and heaven knows how many local jurisdictions. I've also served as an expert in the United Kingdom, and the, in Canada, and in the Commonwealth of Australia.
Excellent, thank you.
My specialty is fatal dog attacks, and I've investigated more of those than anybody else in the world.
Okay, for tonight's hearing, can you just tell us what you've reviewed relative to the dogs?
Yes, I've reviewed the Massachusetts State Law and the county ordinances regarding dogs and dangerous dogs. I reviewed the statements, the handwritten statement and map that I was provided by Gail, I'm not sure the last name, Berger, the person who was bitten. I've reviewed photographs of the two dog bites, one to the individual's right foot, and one to the armpit area, a couple of photographs of the scene and the exterior of the house, and the animal control reports and information that have been, and information that have been provided.
What can you tell us about the bites to the foot? We believe the bites to the foot were, or the ankle, were from Murphy? What are we looking at? When we look at those pictures, if we had in front of us, as you probably do, the top one, we're looking at a mark on the right top foot, and then on the right of the right ankle.
Correct, I'm looking at photographs, and what I see are two puncture, or apparent puncture defects. Both of them appear to be quite shallow. The reason for saying that is because the puncture wound on the top of the foot is directly over the bones of the tarsals, or the long bones in the foot. The bite, or the puncture on the ankle is over the, directly over the knobby bone that you have in your ankle, it's called the tarsus. The skin and muscle in both of those locations is very thin, so a puncture wound that does not cause a medical, medically noted defect to the bone beneath is by definition quite shallow. This is a minor bite on the, according to the scale developed by professional behaviorist Dr. Ian Dunbar, which is probably the most widely accepted scale in the world, as far as I know, and that I've been using and teaching for 20 years, this would be a, what's called a level three bite, that being a bite that involves one to four holes less in depth than half approximately the length of the dog's canine tooth. This bite is consistent with a level three bite, which is the lowest level of bite that involves actual breaking the skin. To contrast that, many of the bites I work are level six, which are fatalities. This was a minor, single engagement, engage and withdraw, we call it, bite.
Okay, and before you opine on them, I just want to get to the bite under the arm, and I just want to make sure, Greg, were you able to circle like that Dunbar?
Oh, Scott, did you?
I'm not, I did not see that.
Okay, I have a couple of this. One second, Jim.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, are you gonna allow this?
They should.
Does the victim get the piece of picture you gave them?
Jim, turning the page, so turning the page to what's titled, "Left Underarm"?
Yes.
Okay, and you see the same mark in two pictures, right?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, so this is allegedly from the dog, Cinnamon, who's a smaller dog, what can you tell us, after looking at the descriptions of what happened, and the visual of these bites here, what can you tell us about the bite level here?
Okay, this is a single engagement, a single bite. If you will look, I'm assuming you're looking at the same two pictures, so if you look at the photograph that on the PDF pages on the upper right, it shows, to orient you, it shows a dark triangular spot towards the bottom right corner, and then about the middle of the image, it shows kind of a semicircular pattern. I can, let me explain that, that is, the semicircular pattern are the impressions that did not break the skin from the incisors in canines, most likely of the upper jaw of the dog that inflicted this defect. The lower dark triangular defect is what is consistent with a single puncture wound, probably of the lower left canine tooth, and it is triangulally shaped because the dog and the victim's body part were at that moment moving in opposite directions. That is a very recognizable puncture with a slight tear that is typically caused by, again, movement of the biter and the bitee away from each other. This is a minor wound, it's a single puncture. The pattern to the top that we were referring to before is the pressure pattern from the six incisors and one of the two canine teeth on the upper jaw, and because it is kind of directional from upper left to lower right, that indicates to me these are from teeth that were, again, withdrawing from the wound at the time it was inflicted, or at least from the person's body, body part.
You've had a conversation with Karen May?
Yes.
Okay, and your understanding is that perhaps the dogs may have been startled that they didn't necessarily see their target until they came around a hedge? Can you tell us?
That is my, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So, can you tell us, in terms of, have you testified in Massachusetts about dangerous dogs before in court?
Yes, I have, several times.
So you're familiar with the Massachusetts statute? You said you read it before the hearing, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so, uh, in your opinion, we're looking to see whether these dogs are a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. So, uh, can you tell us what your opinion is of that and, and why? And focus on the fact that neither, neither dog fully engaged here the way a dangerous dog would?
Yes, the, uh, according to the statute, and I'm looking at it now to refresh my memory, as, uh, provided under statute, these arms would, most appear to be nuisance dogs. There was no severe injury inflicted. These are both minor bites. These were single engagements. These were bites that were frankly, uh, controlled and moderated by the, by the dogs. Either one of them could have done much more damage. And the fact that both the person bitten and the dog's owner and the dogs were startled, um, informs me that this was a, a quick, again, startle reaction. The bites are consistent with, um, to, to, to give a slight expansion, dogs don't have hands, so they use their teeth for everything. Manipulation, eating, carrying their babies, everything they do. Um, these bites are both consistent with a dog, a normal dog using their teeth to warn somebody that they are somehow uncomfortable and they wish to gain space from the person to whom the bite is, or the contact with the teeth is directed. This isn't, it, it, these are both attempts to gain space and to alleviate the anxiety or fear that's been caused by the startles. These, again, are moderated, they are proportionate and normal for a dog that is startled. Um, and I will, again, based on my, my reading of the statute, I would say, yeah, they're probably technically a nuisance dog, but they're definitely, this is definitely not the behavior I would expect from or hold to standard of being dangerous.
Uh, and just to wrap it up, uh, with no priors on these dogs and no, then never having escaped a yard or fenced in enclosure, or even from the owners, um, under Massachusetts law, we're looking to see if the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate, uh, to this circumstance. Was the dog, or either dog, protecting or defending itself, its offspring, or a person from attack or assault? And that would be a nuisance dog? The statute says you can't name that a dangerous dog. In these dogs' minds, are they in a protective mode there?
Mr. Chair, object to that question.
That is a very likely scenario, understand that...
Hold on one second, sir.
For a dog to go...
Hold on, we're gonna, we're gonna...
I'm changing the question.
You can go with that one.
Although, you and I both know that what the dog's intent here was. Can you tell us what you think the dog's intent was? What was?
Jason?
Just tell us what you think the dog's intent was.
Again.
Jason?
That's kind of, I don't think you can speak to a dog's intent.
I can speak to the purpose based on research and experience.
That wasn't the question.
It is now?
Okay, can, may I answer, or...
Here's a question, Jim. What's the likelihood, are these dogs dangerous?
No, they do not meet the standards set by Massachusetts law as dangerous, nor does their behavior in this instance rise to a level that I would call disproportionate or, um, what was, I, I don't remember exactly how you put it, but this was not a disproportionate or dangerous response. This was a normal, proportionate, and actually quite measured and controlled response to a startle reaction that is consistent with a dog that is suddenly, uh, approached by something it perceives as a possible threat. It doesn't mean it's a real threat, and that it acts in, um, consistent with protecting itself or, and/or its owners from an unknown person or object.
Okay, um, so if it is a nuisance, we agree that things have, still, things can change. She can be a better manager of the dogs tomorrow than she is today. Uh, after talking to her, what are some of the things you suggest that you think would, uh, improve the situation here? So it doesn't happen again?
I would suggest, um, the positive measures of, A, seeking additional training so that the dogs are under more reliable voice and leash control. Uh, I would suggest, as part of that training, the socialization or exposure of those dogs to new and, or, uh, different people and circumstances be increased so that they will be less likely to perceive pretty much anybody or anything as a potential threat. Uh, I would suggest that the dogs only be walked one at a time in order to, uh, um, allow the owner to devote their full attention to each of the dogs. If they're going to be walked together, then I would suggest that two competent, healthy adults, each have one dog apiece. Um, the training can be quantified by the dogs being, um, uh, examined for and qualified under the American Kennel Club's Canine Good Citizen Program. That's a situation that tests not only whether the dog is of stable temperament, but whether the dogs have received basic training from their owner, as it involves walking on a leash, walking through a crowd of people, walking by other dogs. And, uh, they are not allowed to show any aggressive or startle response during that examination. Uh, I think a reasonable period of time to achieve that with training assistance would be six months or less. Um, those, I think, would be probably the most important, uh, things I would recommend doing with these dogs.
Okay, so the last thing you said is the AKCCGC, Certified Good Citizen, uh, Canine Good Citizen.
Yes.
Can, can you just very briefly tell us how that test is recognized? The fact that only certain people can administer the test? And the involvement level of the owner for these twelve tests that the dogs have to go through?
Yes, the test has been established and recognized, I believe, um, it was established by a friend of mine, Dr. Mary Burge, I believe back in the late sixties, early seventies. And the test is designed to, uh, examine two things. Number one, the underlying temperament, the, the, the nature of the dog. And secondly, the involvement and responsibility of the owner in doing basic training. It's not up to an obedience type, but it, to pass it, the owner must put in time, effort, and understanding to be able to pass through the twelve tests. And those tests, of course, uh, involve walking on a leash, coming when called, staying on command, um, being pet, petted, it's an upper word, um, being handled, uh, being brushed, uh, being exposed deliberately to a startling stimulus such as suddenly opening an umbrella or dropping an object and making a loud noise. Um, and again, uh, walking through a crowd of people, walking up to and meeting and greeting another person with a control dog. Um, all of these are parts of the test. The test is, is prescribed in not only order, but in particular directions. And to administer such a test, you have to, um, go through testing materials, you have to take a written exam, and you have to be approved by the Canine Good Citizen section of the American Kennel Club before you're allowed to administer these tests.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, I don't have anything further for you, Jim, but others might.
Okay.
I thought you missed the chair of a couple of questions. Uh, thank you. Uh, can you hear me, Mr. Crosby?
Yes, I can, right now.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna try to talk from here, but if you can't hear me, I'll, I'll move closer.
Okay.
Okay, so, first off, you haven't, um, personally examined either of these dogs, correct?
I have not physically met either dog, no, because it's made that impossible.
And, and so your, your opinion is based solely on the description of the incident and the documents and photos that you've reviewed, correct?
Correct, the descriptions, the documents, the photos, yes.
Okay, now, um, you testified concerning the, um, the severity of the bite, um, to the foot. And you, you described this as a, a level three bite under the Dunbar scale, which is one to four punctures from a single bite with no puncture deeper than half the length of the dog's canine teeth. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, but there were, in fact, two bites, um, to the foot here.
Um, I have no evidence that indicates that because the position that they could be or that they appear to be could potentially have been from a dog opening its mouth pretty wide.
So, so the, the dog in one single bite would have, or could have bitten the top of the foot and the ankle?
Uh, sure, if it's a pretty good sized dog, and that's my understanding, if he's a pretty good sized dog. If not, if we were to presume that this was more than a single bite, then it would be a level three B, which is multiple bites at a level three. It still does not, uh, increase the level from a three. It's just simply a three B.
Okay, and so then, the difference between a level three bite and a level four bite is based on the depth of the puncture wound, correct?
No, it's based on the depth of the puncture wounds, the number of holes that are involved. The, uh, description also details to expect deep muscle bruising, uh, and further injuries just on itself. A level four does not strictly depend on the depth. To read from the description, uh, it's a single bite with at least one puncture deeper than half the length of the dog's canine tooth. It may also have deep bruising around the wound, uh, where the dog held on and bore down, or lacerations in both directions where the dog held on and shook its head from side to side.
Okay, and so, um, you looked at the picture here of the, the top of the, the victim's foot, correct?
Yes.
And we see a one puncture wound there.
Yes.
And, and then we see a, a much larger wound next to it and above it, um, that look considerably like bruising, don't they?
I see some, some surface dark, uh, surface bruising surrounding a darker section, which would, the darker section would be the puncture wound. So there is some shallow bruising. That means that, um, there has been a gathering of some blood under the top few layers of skin.
And it, it's shallow here, um, but the, the victim was wearing a sneaker, wasn't she?
That is what the statement says, yes.
Yeah, so, doesn't it stand to reason that this injury would have been significantly more severe if she was not wearing a sneaker?
Um, not necessarily. It depends on where on the sneaker the, uh, the tooth hit, how thick the material of the sneaker was. There's a lot of difference between a pair of light running shoes like I would use for running a marathon versus the, the heavier, uh, uh, sneakers that are still boots that I would wear when dealing with a, a potential biting dog.
So then it's your, your opinion that a bite that goes through a sneaker and into a person's skin and that also causes bruising in the area is still only a level three bite?
Based on the criteria, yes, this is a level three bite. Bruising varies from human to human, and it's very common around dog bites, even very shallow bites. Since this person did not report, and there's no allegation documentation of any ligaments, tendons, or, or skeletal damage below the bite, it would seem to meet the criteria of being less than half the depth of a canine tooth. And even if you add in the thickness of the sneaker, I doubt that her sneakers were, uh, the, by themselves were half the length of a canine tooth.
But you don't know that?
I have not seen any documentation on just how thick the sneakers were.
And you haven't seen any documentation on how long the dog's teeth were?
No, uh, that I'm having to project simply, uh, from the, uh, general size, um, that I have been, uh, explained, that neither one of these, for instance, are 150 pound Great Dane, nor are we talking a Chihuahua.
Did, did you, do you have photos of the, the dogs?
I have not had photos of the dogs.
So you haven't seen the dogs?
No, I haven't.
Okay, so you haven't seen the dogs? You don't know how long their teeth are? You haven't seen the sneaker? You don't know how thick the sneaker was? But what you can see is that the dog caused an injury that went through the sneaker and into the skin. And it's your position that that is not a severe injury?
Yeah, it's my, it's my opinion that that's a minor bite, which is consistent with, if we presume the other one is also a separate bite or together, uh, that that one is very clearly above where the sneaker would be. So unless she was wearing boots, uh, that is also a very light engagement.
But that makes it two bites. So that takes it out of level three, doesn't it?
No, that makes it a level three B.
I don't see a level three B in your, um, description that you gave us.
Um, well, that's an, that's an older copy of it. Dr. Dunbar has, um, published. In addition to that, plus, Dr. Dunbar and I have had, uh, many personal discussions over the scale. Um, in fact, assisting the Maddie Shelter Medicine, uh, folks in reworking the scale with Dr. Dunbar's cooperation. And he has established that there is a three B, which is more than one bite at a level three.
But you didn't give us that part of the scale, correct?
I'm, I'm sorry, the, the, there, there's a couple of different copies that have floating around. Um, I thought I had sent the, uh, most recent, but, uh, the, the three B is part of the, the current and most, the last probably two to three years versions that Dr. Dunbar is teaching.
Now, you also testified earlier that you're, you're familiar with the, the definition of dangerous dog under Massachusetts law?
Yes, I'm looking at the statute, uh, right now.
Okay, and so then, can you sure, um, read for the board where in that definition it says that, um, a dog is only a dangerous dog if it causes severe injury?
Uh, I don't believe that the Massachusetts law actually includes that. I simply mention that because, uh, that a severe injury, in my mind, would automatically, uh, put us well over the threshold into considering a dog dangerous. Um, so in other words, if the dog ripped the person's arms off or, or something like that, I would pretty much disregard the minor parts of the statute. Uh, this is not a severe wound on either case.
Um, okay, and so, but the definition itself doesn't say that it needs to be that serious of an injury. It just says causing physical injury.
Correct, it just simply says, um, it, it does not detail the level of injury necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, nothing further. Members of the board, do you have any questions?
No.
I just have a follow-up if you guys don't have questions.
Uh, no questions?
Um, do you, Mr. Pezzanzini?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to know, um, in weight, size, how big are these dogs? Um, just to get an idea, I'll be there.
I'm sorry, so through you, Mr. Chair, just procedurally, before we move on, um, I'd like to give the complainant an opportunity to ask this witness any questions?
Well, if the attorney has a follow-up question, maybe we...
Well, if the attorney has a follow-up question, maybe we should go with him first, then go. Okay.
Just to address your question, Cinnamon, 44 pounds, Murphy, 70 pounds? Thank you. Jim, uh, when you first got this case, right, you took a look at the local bylaws, is that right?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
And, uh, one thing you said to a client is that pit bulls are not allowed in the town, right?
That is, was part of their, is part of their code, yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, through you, I'm gonna object to that. We're not proceeding under the town's bylaw. We're proceeding under the, the general laws. There's no suggestion here that this dog is not allowed in the town because it's a, it's a pit bull. Notwithstanding what the bylaw might say, that bylaw has not been updated since the law was changed recently.
Is this your first case testifying where you haven't been face to face with, with anybody, or haven't met the dogs physically?
No, there, there have been a number of cases across the country, and in fact, as far as India, where I've been asked to evaluate physical evidence and statements and so forth, because in some of the cases, frankly, the dogs are simply not available. In some cases, they've been put down or whatever.
Okay, now, as somebody who trains animal control officers, and you were an animal control officer, the questions you've been asked about tooth depth and, and looking at a sneaker or medical bills that we haven't had, is that anything that the animal control officer could have done at the time of his investigation?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Do you allow that?
Yes, um, to the complainants, do you have any questions? Members of the board, anything?
Um, back to the bylaw. The bylaws have not been updated, and I don't believe that if it is in there that's saying we don't allow pit bulls in town, I don't believe it's legal anyway. And, and I, I don't remember that ever being in there. I know several years ago, we tried to put in a bylaw saying that they'd have to have a muzzle if they were walking, but I don't believe pit bulls are illegal in us, in Abington.
Um, yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So the, the law was significantly changed in 2012, and, and one of the provisions of the new state law is that a municipality cannot ban a dog based solely on its breed.
Correct.
And so, you know, to the extent that this bylaw has not been updated since 2012, it's my opinion that that provision would be in conflict with state law and would not be enforceable, and, which is why, when we sent the notice of this proceeding, we only made reference to the provisions of the general laws. And it's my recommendation that when you proceed to your decision, that you only apply the law under the general laws without regard to what the bylaw may or may not say at this point.
So our last witness will be Karen May.
Hi, my name's Karen May, and I'm the owner of the dogs.
Hang on one second.
Yes. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Thank you.
Just quickly for the record, your items.
44 Tevero Street.
And one more thing. Matt, this microphone is working fine? It is? Okay, thank you.
So, since the get-go, at the very first instance when this happened, I had been nothing but very sorry that this happened. I called Gail at, I think it was a little bit after eight in the morning, you know, right after it happened, to check on her. I offered to pay for any medical bills. I followed up with numerous calls to her. Both I and the dog were startled. We both came around the hedges. I never said hello to her. I was holding leashes. And when I was switching leashes around, because I had two dogs, you know, Murphy was startled. He'd get out of my hand. You know, I immediately grabbed him. Cinnamon never became off, came off leash just when I was grabbing Murphy. It was that close to Gail, she fell down. You know, we, we, when we got the quarantine, both dogs are quarantined. We just quarantined them both at the same time. Every time we took them out, we'd muzzle Murphy. We have them on leashes. I don't tie them out in the yard. Um, I haven't since this instance, and I don't plan on it. The dogs prefer to be in the house anyways. When they are out with an adult, they're on a leash and muzzled. And that's what we've been doing since the get-go, since this instance. I'm very sorry. I've been nothing but contrite in trying to do what the Bergens have asked, and also just to do the right neighborly thing. And, um, you know, the dogs are on six-foot leashes. We're both gonna do one at a time, and we'll do additional training. I don't know what else further I could do.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just a few questions?
Yep.
So, on the, um, how long have you had Murphy?
Probably about a year and a half to two years.
And how old is Murphy?
He's three.
And, um, how much does Murphy weigh?
I'd say a little over 70 pounds. He's about this high. I don't know how, you know, big that would be.
And, um, how did you acquire Murphy?
Um, he's my son's girlfriend's dog.
And has Murphy been licensed the entire time you've had him?
Um, I think so, yes.
And has he ever gone through any type of training?
Yes.
What type of training?
He went to K-9 college in Holbrook. And, um, Michaela took him a couple of times.
I'm sorry, who's Michaela?
Uh, my son's girlfriend.
And, um, has Murphy ever bitten anybody before?
Not to my knowledge.
And how often do you, um, prior to this incident, how often would you walk Murphy in the neighborhood?
Oh, I walk him in the morning and at night.
Every day?
Every day, yes.
And, um, has he ever acted like this before?
As far as, well, no, no, I've not had this happen before.
And, um, I mean, has he had any previous interactions with Ms. Bergen?
No, I think just when he's been out, you know, we've seen him walking by, but he's never met her.
And in those other occasions when you've seen her walking by, how has he reacted to her?
Well, sometimes I think he barks when people go by our house, you know?
But he's never before gone after her while you were walking him on the leash?
No.
And has anything like this happened since?
Um, well, the second occurrence that she referred to, I was in my own yard, and they just drove down in their car down the street, and, you know, they beeped the horn. I was startled. My back was to the, to the road. The dogs were both with me on leashes, and I was startled, the dogs were startled, and both the dogs ran to the end of their leashes, but that's all that happened. And they barked. That's what dogs do.
And, um, who else lives in the, well, not who else, but are there other adults that live in the household besides you?
Yes, my husband and my son.
And, um, if the, the board here, you know, were to issue an order that, that you have to impose conditions on restraint of the dog, what would you be willing to do in order to try to ensure that this doesn't happen again?
I'd be willing to muzzle them, and, um, you know, I'd help put them out on a run, and there's always an adult that walks them. Take training.
Um, you heard Mr. Crosby talk about the K-9 Good Citizen Program? Are you willing to do that?
Yes.
For both of the dogs?
Okay, so, I'll agree to that only if I don't muzzle them, taking them to the K-9 Good Citizenship.
Why is that?
The reason is that there's nothing more secure than a muzzle, so if you pin a muzzle on these dogs that had these minor bites, there's no need to go through all the training, because the muzzle is the most effective thing you can do besides killing the dog. And for these types of bites, that, that would be overkill training and muzzle.
Anything else that you'd be willing to do?
Um, I don't think so.
Members of the board, do you have any questions?
You, you mentioned that you have tried to do whatever the Bergens have asked since then. What did they ask?
They asked me not to bring the dogs down the end of Morton Street Extension near their home. I have, have tried to avoid being on Morton Street Extension, even though it's the side of my house and the access for my driveway, but I'm, you know, bringing the dogs around the other side of the house, to the backyard.
So if we add it back to the order, you'd be okay with that?
Yes.
And you mentioned, did the dog have gone to K-9 College in Holbrook a couple of times?
Yes.
Did they complete any classes? Is there any certificate certifications?
He did complete classes, but I don't know exactly what they were. My other dog had went there as well.
Is that, and are they still in business?
Yes.
Uh, any other questions, members?
How are the dogs around kids, and are there children in the house, or?
There's no children in the house.
Do they go for a ride and go to a park or anything like that? Or are they really just house dogs?
They're really just house dogs.
Okay. And how, how big is the other dog?
Cinnamon is 44 pounds.
Forty-four, and what make, what, what make?
She's a hound dog mix.
Hound, okay.
Yeah. I don't know what's what.
And how old is Cinnamon?
She's seven.
Seven. And how did you obtain her?
Um, I went to an, an adoption event for my daughter when she was, um, I think eight weeks old.
Okay. I have no other questions right now.
I have a question. So you're willing to let the dog go to the Good Dog, Good Dog Citizen Program, but you wouldn't muzzle, and you're willing to keep the dog and muzzle till he passes the program?
Say that again?
You're willing to take the dog to that Good Citizen Program, but you didn't want to muzzle the dog if he was being trained?
Wait and finish. His question is, will you, if I may, will you muzzle the dogs until, and if and until they receive their CGC? That's, that's fair. So until they pass these twelve, I think that's what you're asking. Until they pass it, would you agree to muzzling the dogs until they pass it?
Oh, yes.
Uh, you have more questions here? By David?
Just one thing, just for your own benefit. I would, if I were you, if this board, you know, sees fit, I would look into that. I don't know if I would commit that you're gonna, it, it sounds like a big task. So, I mean, I have dogs, a dog, I have rescue dogs. And I'm not minimizing your incident. My wife was bitten by a dog when she was a kid. She was bitten by a dog here in Abington a few years ago, walking into a friend's house. We never called you, Joe. But I, I understand the trauma, but I, thinking about that and thinking about my dog, I'm not sure my dog could do that. So I would just be careful, you know, I think, requiring that maybe, or committing to that if I will. So, just my opinion.
Anything further from members of the board? Attorney Cohen, anything further from your side?
No.
Attorney Cohen, do you want to give a summary of the board before we close the evidentiary portion of the hearing?
You've, you've given us quite a bit of time. I think I'm not gonna take up more time. I just ask that she wants to be reasonable, that she be reasonable, and she's gonna take every step she can to make sure this doesn't happen again.
May they prevent from the Bergens.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Okay, so now we'll, we'll enter the, the final phase of this hearing. And as I mentioned at the beginning, you have two tasks in front of you. Um, the first is whether you, you find that these dogs are nuisance dogs or dangerous dogs as those terms are defined in the law, and I'll, I'll give you both of those definitions in a moment. So you can vote yes or no. If you vote no, that they're not either nuisance or dangerous dogs, then the night has concluded and there's no, nothing further to do. If however, you do find that they are nuisance or dangerous dogs, then you have to address a second question, which is what, if any, remedy should be imposed to abate the dangerousness or the nuisance? Now, with all due respect to, to Mr. Crosby, you know, the, the determination of whether or not these dogs are nuisance dogs or dangerous dogs is yours to make, based on, on the facts as you've heard them. You can certainly take into account his experience and opinions, and, and give them whatever weight you, you deem appropriate, but it is your decision at the end of the day. So I, I'll go through each of the two definitions, and then I, I would suggest that, that you discuss that question first, and then we can move on to the question of remedy. Okay, so, um, the first definition is a dangerous dog. A dog that either, one, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal causing physical injury or death, or two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestically owned animal. So there's two elements here. The first is an, an attack on either a person or a domestic animal, which we have here, causing physical injury, which we have here, and without justification, which I think is, is disputed. Ms. Bergen would testify that she was doing nothing other than walking in her own neighborhood, and she was surprise attacked by these dogs. On the, on the other side, Ms. May would say that the dogs were startled and reacted to being startled. So that's a question that, that you're going to have to, to face. The other part of this is that the, the dog behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an imminent threat of physical injury. So this is an instance in which the dog acts in an aggressive way, but does not necessarily attack or bite someone.
Excuse me, Craig, you have thought of a word.
I'm sorry.
Unjustified imminent threat?
Yes, an unjustified imminent threat. I'm not sure that this really applies here, because if you're gonna find it's dangerous, my opinion would be that it would fall under the first category rather than the second. With respect to dangerousness, there are a few exceptions. That the dog was protecting itself, its offspring, or another animal or person from attack. The person attacked or threatened was committing a crime upon the person or property of the owner. The person attacked or threatened was teasing or otherwise provoking the dog. Or at the time of the attack or threat, the person or animal attacked or threatened had breached an enclosure or structure in which the dog was kept apart from the public. So if you find any of those circumstances, then the dog cannot be considered dangerous. So now we'll move on to nuisance. And again, we can go over all of this again. A nuisance dog is one that causes a source of annoyance to a sick person through excessive barking or other disturbance. That doesn't apply here. By excessive barking, causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment. Or has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal or person, but such threat or attack was not grossly disproportionate reaction under the circumstances. So the difference between a dangerous dog and a nuisance dog with respect to an attack is that a dangerous dog is one who attacks without any justification and causes physical injury or death. Whereas a nuisance dog might have threatened or attacked, but that attack was not a grossly disproportionate reaction under the circumstances. So it's somewhat a level of degree. And what you've heard here again is that, you know, the dog may have been reacting to being startled. And so what you have to face, in my opinion, is was the dog's reaction to that circumstance unreasonable? I think if you find that the dog did act unreasonably, then it's a dangerous dog. If you find that it acted reasonably, then you can find it's a nuisance dog. So I know I've given you a lot, I'll stop for a minute and let you ponder and ask questions.
And no matter what we decide, nuisance or dangerous, the outcome, the resolution, could be the same? There's no, like, minimum resolution for a dangerous dog?
So if you find that it's a dangerous dog, then the statute sets forth a menu of options that you can adopt to either restrain the dog or protect the public from the dog, or ultimately to euthanize the dog. If it's a nuisance dog, it's more open-ended. However, I would suggest that if you find that it's a nuisance dog, it would not be in order to, order that the dog be euthanized. I think that would not necessarily stand up for a nuisance dog.
So I guess to the board, just the question is, whether the dog acted in a reasonable manner, considering what happened, what we heard.
It appears, and it's my opinion, that the dogs were startled. And Joe has never had a complaint on these dogs before or since. So in my opinion, it's not a dan, they're not dangerous dogs. I would like to maybe declare them a nuisance dog at this point and with some restrictions. But I'll listen to the rest.
No, I agree with Alex. I don't believe, I do believe they're nuisance dogs and there should be some restrictions.
Really, I'm the fence here between nuisance and dangerous because, yes, they were startled. But I'm having a hard time believing their reaction was appropriate to being startled. That's my only hang-up. As a dog owner myself, that's all. And I know every dog's different, I'm not comparing. I am, but...
Go to that definition. I definitely want a nuisance dog.
Oh, I get through.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd like to have that stricken from the record.
Well, yeah, I'm with, I'm with you, Mike. To be startled like that and to attack through, you know, through a shoe in that manner. And it seems a lot, especially when you're on a leash with your owner.
But then I also, you know, and again, I'm not an expert at all from the training I've done with my dog and, you know, the research I've done. I, you understand that there's a pack mentality too, where if it's more than one dog, sometimes they get each other going.
Well, how about if we did a nuisance dog with some of these restrictions? That the dogs would have to be walked with a muzzle, first of all, and only one dog at a time with a four-foot leash so that the owner would have control of the dog. And they must be muzzled when they're outside. No unsupervised dogs outside on a run or a leash or anything, unless there's an adult, I'll deal with them. And if you are gonna put the dogs outside, I would suggest a kennel that you could put the dogs in. And if you were gonna go for the Good Citizen, that would even be better, or maybe some more training. I was Animal Control Officer in Abington years ago, long before Joe was. And I've seen, I saw a couple of dog bites. It never got to this point. It was resolved with the residents. But I just hate to label the dog a dangerous dog when it's in the three or four years for one and seven years for the other. This is the first incident. So I'd be in favor of calling it a nuisance dog with restrictions.
Mr. Chair, through you, to you and Mike, if it would help sort of break the log jam here. You know, sometimes when we, when we talk about other types of discipline, like liquor licensing or employee discipline, we talk about progressive discipline, right? So you start off with something lower and you work your way up if additional incidents occur. So maybe you could think about this distinction between nuisance and dangerous like that. And certainly, if something were to happen again in the future, you know, this incident would be of record, this hearing would be of record, and you would start from, okay, now this is our second time that we're here. And, you know, you could factor that into your analysis. But here, you know, where these dogs have been owned on this property for a number of years, this is the first time that it's happened. And, you know, the dogs were not running loose and unattended at the time that the incident occurred. It does, you know, seem like it was an unfortunate accident that the owner was trying to keep proper control and, you know, something unexpected happened, which could happen anytime with dogs. And, you know, it certainly doesn't justify a dog biting someone. But, you know, I think, under these circumstances and given progressive discipline, it might make sense to start at nuisance and then work your way up in the future if you have to.
Yeah, I mean, I personally don't want to get hung up on the word nuisance or dangerous. Either way, what I'm concerned about is the end result, that this doesn't happen again. Whether we name it nuisance or dangerous won't take away the fact that it did happen. Won't take away the fear this very had that day. You know, but what we can do restricts what's going forward. Hopefully, I like all Alex's recommendations. I wanted to ask also, you refrain from walking in front of the Bergens residence, I'm just saying. And I know that's tough, you guys are still neighbors and still, we're even. Mr. Corral?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That totally screwed me a little bit.
Just, just an aspect of, what type of liability will the town have? God forbid something, and I, you know, I do, I completely agree with progressive discipline, that sort of thing. But God forbid, second time is. And I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but what kind of liability falls on us?
Mr. Chair, through you. In my experience and opinion, the likelihood of liability on the town is little to nothing. Obviously, I can never guarantee any sort of, sort of result. But there are specific immunities in the law under Chapter 258, Section 10 of the General Laws. The town cannot be held liable for injuries caused by third persons that you do not control. You cannot be held liable for failing or refusing to take enforcement action. There are a number of defenses that you could assert. And, you know, the primary liability would fall on the dog owner.
So with that, I would make a motion that this dog be, dog be, these dogs be classified as nuisance, nuisance dogs. When they are outside of the house, they must be on a leash no longer.
I'm sorry, just to town council, should we do this in two separate motions?
I would suggest you do it in two separate. I think it'll be easier that way.
So we do, to make it a nuisance dog?
Okay.
And then we do restrictions?
Yes.
Or whatever we want to do.
So, so your motion is to declare the both dogs nuisance dogs?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of giving the dogs nuisance dogs? Say aye.
Aye.
The board's unanimous.
Okay, so now with respect to this finding of nuisance, the statute does not contain any specific guidance as to what, what you can order. But it's a reasonableness standard. So what conditions do you reasonably believe will, what's the word, mitigate the nuisance? So in order to protect public safety, what conditions do you think are reasonably necessary to impose?
So we could require, I'm hung up on muzzling both dogs. Both dogs are not muzzled now, correct?
Correct.
Just the pit bull?
Just the big one, because the little one doesn't walk on a muzzle. She freezes and won't move.
You know, I don't want to make it so difficult that, you know, she can't go outside with the dogs either. And again, I'm not minimizing your trauma whatsoever. But we're just trying to be reasonable here. And I would say that the bigger dog should be muzzled when outside, walked on a leash no longer than four feet. And if it's tied up in the yard on a run, there needs to be an adult supervising. And I would suggest maybe trying to get some more training, if you could. And if you could get the Good Citizen Award, that would be great too. But that's a tall order, so that's not part of it. But it would be the muzzle, the big dog, a leash of not exceeding four feet. And the dogs are not to be outside on a run unless they're supervised by an adult. Those are my three issues.
I would add too, that the dog can be walked by one adult per dog.
Yes.
We'll walk in both dogs at the same time, like we have been doing anyway. I'd make that part of the order. And also to not to walk in front of the Bergens residence.
Correct.
I'm for the Good Citizen program, the extra term. I feel like the muzzle is a short-term. It's not really stopping the dog's behavior. It's preventing him from acting out. So I too would like to see some sort of the Good Citizen Program from completion by both dogs. I know it's a tall order and, you know, we can't make you act of good faith, you know?
Well, we could require that they have training, but not necessarily complete the good dog thing. Being a dog owner myself, my dog would never pass that. It just, it's not gonna happen. So I think that is a tall order, although my dog could react well to training. So I, I would prefer not to put a label on the training, but I would like to see more training also. And if you've been to K-9 College, that's where my dog was, I think that's maybe where you should continue.
Chair, do you have anything?
So do you want, want to make that into a motion?
Could you read it back? Just to read it back?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, okay, so Murphy only muzzled when outside at all times.
Correct.
Both dogs walked on a leash no longer than four feet.
Correct.
Both dogs, if tied up in the yard, must be under adult supervision.
Correct.
The dogs may only be walked by one adult per dog.
Correct.
The dogs may not be walked in front of the Bergens residence.
Correct.
And the dogs shall undergo training of the owner's choice?
They're in accreditation. Like when we went to school, like, at school, I mean, I don't say we want to try.
Can I talk?
Yeah, yeah, Joe.
All right, good. So Joe Kenny, Animal Control again. I'm not a dog trainer. I do know a lot of people that are dog trainers, as well as people that administer the Good Citizenship test. It's a difficult test. It's, in most cases, doesn't get passed on the first time. And personally, I've seen a lot of dogs that are great with the test, take longer than six months. I think it's a really long course. I think having a muzzle on the dogs is, it's not a long-term fix. It's not changing a behavior, but it's preventing them from doing anything. So to put in like a restriction of trying to long-term fix the dog, I think is more difficult than being able to prevent something from happening. In my opinion, I think the muzzle is gonna do more than training as a long-term fix. Because even with training, I know dogs that have been trained as therapy dogs or dogs that are trained as, like, companion dogs and stuff like that that are allowed in stores, and they still bite people. It still happens. It's an animal. If it has a muzzle on, it can't bite. That eliminates that process and it eliminates a variable, whether the dog has a pass and then we end up back here in six months because it hasn't passed the training. It's gonna eliminate that in the long run. I also think it's difficult to say like, and I'm only saying this because of the health to the properties, it is difficult to say to avoid walking in front of the house. I mean, down the road, yes, I see. But the driveways are more or less adjacent to each other. So it is a really difficult situation to put that stipulation in as a rule. And other towns, I've seen a lot of these rules turn really gray. And then it becomes a problem down the line because we're gonna get calls. So it's better to have rules that are like enforceable and physical. Like your short leashes here, muzzles, stuff like that. That's not something that's a variable and that you can tangibly see and have evidence of. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Chair, through you, Joe?
Yep.
So if, I'm trying to figure out how to phrase this. If, if the owner were to come to you with the training program that they intend to use, would you be able to give an opinion and say, yes, I think that's a... "Yes, I think that's a legitimate program," or "No, I don't think that's..."
I'll be honest with you guys. I can give you an opinion, but I have no background to say my opinion matters.
Only to the extent that you know who the trainers are?
Yes, I do know trainers, and I know that there's certifications that are going to give you more credit for the dog. But the only thing I'd say with that is it's a very, very real thing. I know dogs that have passed and have had bites. I know dogs that have passed and been great. I know dogs that don't pass because they're just too active. They're energetic, and they're great dogs. So I think those tests are very tangible to like a specific dog versus to a like a actual factual qualification. I think it's a difficult thing to evaluate, and down the line, it might change.
So I guess my question though is not so much that requiring that the dogs pass a certain test, but only that they be trained by someone with the appropriate credentials. And so, you know, no, we're not guaranteeing any result, that it's going to work or it's not, but that at least they say...
It's a good faith effort. Yeah, if it was like a good faith effort and they went to an accredited trainer, I think that's a reasonable requirement. I think putting something like a Good Citizenship or an actual test to it is a difficult thing. But having basic training, I think, isn't important with any pet ownership. Completing at least a basic training program is important with any kind of pet ownership. So I would definitely be okay with that. I think most dogs can compete, complete that. Teach us basic leash etiquette and stuff like that. I think that's a reasonable request as opposed to a Good Citizenship test.
It's trained and they can get it like...
That's... Yeah, Canine College is a handful of trainers around here. You can do it like 4H. You can do it through Petco and Petsmart. It's a standardized program. But Canine College is a really good school, which comes out of recommended.
So, Mr. Chair, through you, if we could change at the Animal Control Officer's suggestion, eliminate the requirement that the dogs not be walked in front of the Bergen residence and add a requirement that the dogs be trained by an accredited program approved by the Animal Control Officer?
Any objections? Does that mean no more? Thank you, Jim.
So could you read that back again?
Yes. So the order would read that Murphy be muzzled any time that he is outdoors, that both dogs shall be walked on leashes no longer than four feet in length, that if the dogs are tied up in the yard or are otherwise outdoors, they shall be under adult supervision, that the dogs shall only be walked by one adult per dog, and that the dogs shall be trained by an accredited program approved by the Animal Control Officer?
Somebody want to make that motion?
So that was my motion.
I'll second it. Any more discussion? All those in favor of making that order?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Report? Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, the final order of business is just to close the...
Close, I agree. So the motion is good. I'll accept the motion to close out the hearing. I made the motion to close earlier.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. The agenda got very... No, the table next up on the agenda is our 745 appointment. A little behind, the first one. Transfer of commercial garage license at 347 Summer Street, Abington, Auto Repair Corporation. This is a public hearing. The Board of Select will hold a public hearing on August 24th, 2020, at 7:45 in the Charter Room, 500 Leonard's Way, and a petition of Ms. B. Oliveria to transfer the commercial garage license at 347 Summer Street, Abington Auto Repair Corp., from Gilvin, I.A., White. So I will accept the motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Second, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of opening the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is open. Do we have anybody in the room to speak on this? Going through the paperwork, does anybody see any department heads that had an issue?
All I see on Marshall Adams' email here is the fact that the number of cars allowed is 33, not 50, based on the application he's reading.
So this is a transfer. So what was the license before? Thirty-three.
Do you have the old license?
The existing license is fifteen... Excuse me, fifteen for repair, ten customer spaces, three employees, for a total of... Fifteen, ten, and three does not equal two, does it? Well, fifteen for repair, ten for customer, and three employee comes to twenty-eight by my math. But total number of cars on the existing license says thirty-three.
Correct. Any motion made by the board, I would expect to have the contingency that the application be changed to thirty-three total cars.
This is Adam Street, right?
No.
Where is that?
Summer Street. This is the one across from the sewer building. And actually, I would kind of like to see a new plan, and I'll tell you why. Because when that license was issued originally for thirty-three cars, there wasn't a solar field on that property. Now there's a solar field there also, and I'm not sure how they're fitting thirty-three cars in there. And typically, we would have a plot plan showing the spaces with the application. And I'm not seeing one here. So I would like to continue this until we can get a plot plan showing where these thirty-three cars are going to go. Just my opinion.
Motion? Well, according to this here, we got forty-two squats. Am I looking at the right thing here? I'll check out that. Forty-two squats with the measurements.
I don't see that in my packet. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Here it is.
That's showing you a lot more space for that many cars.
I'm sorry. I didn't see this in the packet.
Even with the ground bump.
Yeah. Is this just a repair license? Or is it a used car also?
No, it's just a commercial garage. Class two. Yeah, it's not just a...
Just a commercial garage. I would like to keep it at the thirty-three. Just a commercial garage, they're not repairing fifty cars at once anyway.
Yeah, no, I mean, if it's a transfer, they won't... I mean, we should keep it the same.
We had complaints in the past there. We haven't... I'm not aware of any in the last few years, but there were complaints about junk cars and...
That was with the previous owner. I remember that they first came on board, that those were complaints. And then we had a either a transfer or a sale of this business. Then it's been no complaints since.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve with the change of thirty-three cars, not the fifty.
Yeah, we'd challenge it. Consider that changed, but I'll approve the license to transfer thirty-three cars. We just want to make sure that that doesn't change it. So that motion is... Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of transferring the commercial garage license at 347 Summer Street, Abington?
Aye.
unanimous, this is transferred. Accept the Board of Select will hold a public hearing on August 24th, 2020, at 7:50 in the Charter Room, 500 Leonard's Way, and a petition of Clarissa D. Silveira Rodriguez to transfer the class-two license at 766 Adam Street from Ed McLaughlin, VDA Gas Mask Car Mart, LLC, to Panda Auto Group. Do we have somebody here to speak on this property?
I'm the owner of Mask Car Mart. Maybe I can answer any question.
Please just step up the microphone. Give your name and address.
My name's Ed McLaughlin. I live in 499 Sherman Street, Canton, Massachusetts.
And you're representing my business?
I own Mask Car Mart.
Mask Car Mart, Abington.
766 Adam Street, Abington, Mass.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience. I know we're a little behind tonight.
No problem.
There were some questions posed by the deputy fire chief on this property. Can you wrap those?
Yeah, there was some... The owner of the property had some things in the back of the property that the fire chief wanted him to square away, clean up, and appeased him in the town. And basically, I was aware of that, but I just wanted to show up and, you know, I knew I was on the agenda to answer any questions or just be on top of any other issues that arise.
So I guess the first question is, are those... Have those... I guess their drums have had this material. Have they been moved or disposed of properly? Are they still there?
Oh, I don't know what is in the drums. I don't know if they're... I don't know what it was. However, I'm not going to... I don't know if they're still there because I know that the town still has to talk to the landlord on that stuff, and I don't know where they're at. So I'm going to let the town, and I think the marshal, I believe is for... No, I forget the department.
Marshal's the building, the...
The building department, yep. Handle that because it's not, you know, I'm just going to sell the license. I'm just a renter there, and I don't own the property, so...
And not speaking for the board, but probably what we're going to do is continue this hearing.
Correct. That's what I was aware of. I was aware of it. I just wanted to make sure that I'm on top of everything.
So if anybody's ready to make a motion?
I make a motion to continue the hearing until we hear back from... Is it the deputy chief?
Before you do that, I'm sorry, I don't believe I opened this meeting.
Oh.
So I'll accept the motion to open the public hearing. I'm sorry.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, the hearing is open. Go ahead.
You should motion it to a deputy sergeant. So I would motion it to the fourteenth.
Okay.
We don't have enough information, I move...
Then we continue with that.
Yeah.
So I'd move to... Move this hearing to September 14th at a time to be determined by the town manager.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, continue the meeting until September 14th, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing will be continued.
Second. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks.
One more motion.
I'll second. Oh, no, Mike seconded.
All those in favor of the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, good night. Thank you very much.